Yeah. And she, okay there. And. Yeah. All right. Okay. Three of us. It's been all better. It's been. Those bodies. I'm gonna regret it. I'm gonna. Be very strong. I'm sure. It is true. One of the. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, they're. Sure. I don't think. Got. It's. Oh, it's not. So. We. Uh. You know. You know what? I don't. I like. It's. It's. Well, that's. Oh, my God.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. If you would, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge. To. The. And two. Well. And. I'm here. And. There. That's it.
Okay. Missy, you wanna do roll call?
Yes, Tanya.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Libby.
Here.
Vanessa.
Here.
Brett.
Present.
And we have a quorum. So we're gonna make a lot of appointments here tonight. Uh, the first one would be the council appointments for president and vice president.
Do you have to approve the agenda?
Well, it doesn't, it's not on here.
Not on.
Okay, so we're gonna, well, before we do that, we'll make it a, a change to the agenda. There's one item that's not on here. We're adding, uh, for the new business, item number I, to appoint a council member to the police commission. So that'll be added to the agenda as well. So next, uh, we'll do the council appointments. So we're looking for a motion for president first.
Do we need to make a motion to approve the minutes? I mean, not the minutes, but the meeting agenda? It's not on there, but we usually do that.
On there.
Oh, it's after that?
Yeah.
Sorry, cuz we have to do this first. Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm just going down when it says here.
Oh, follow the orders.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I nominate Tanya Davis for president again.
I'll second that nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And I'm going to make a nomination for Mr. Ryan Rommel to be vice president again.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. Now, we need a motion to consider the meeting agenda.
Is that up? I'll make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
With change.
With change.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so we're looking also for an approval for the previous meeting minutes, which include the executive session uh, for December nineteenth and then the council meeting for December eighteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes and the executive session for, what was the date?
December nineteenth.
December nineteenth.
Mm-hmm.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, I guess I included that. That's the first item on the new business. Ryan, Ryan threw me off my game here.
No.
Okay.
So that, that executive session was held for exactly what it was publicly, uh, the topic that was discussed was what was publicly advertised. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have, uh, end dot and milestone for an update, I think. Do we have, is Grant on or who do we have?
Uh, uh, I'm here.
Okay.
And you go ahead, Grant. Thank you. All right. So milestone, uh, Duke Energy ha- has completed their relocation of the pole. Um, they have determined that there are several poles that are not able to be relocated, that will need to be held during the construction work um, with a, uh, pole truck. So we are coordinating right now with Duke Energy to get that pole truck on site, so that they're able to hold several transmission poles for us while we work to, uh, dig safely. Bright Speed has finished their relocations along the Mount Vernon Trail, uh, well, as well for their overhead poles and have buried their line. Um, so as we move into the next few weeks, we're continuing with our planning and getting all our, uh, making sure that all of our plans are in the row, as well as all of our prelimin- preliminary work is completed. Um, and then we'll move into digging later in this month. Unfortunately, we lost a key personnel involved, uh, with that process, so we are working to fill that void right now. And we will be out, uh, working on hopefully more towards the end of the month. Um, and then once the, the digging on the water line begins, we'll also start working on the storm line as well.
So there's a delay then on the start of the water line?
Yeah. Yes, unfortunately, there's a little bit of a delay. We plan to have crews hopefully out starting on the twenty-second for the actual digging. Um, until before, or until then, uh, we will be working on our preliminary layout as well as some other things that need to be done first. And that does not impact our completion date for the project at all either.
Thanks a lot, Grant, I appreciate it, and sorry to, sorry to hear.
Thank you.
Grant, it's Chief Bratton. I wanted to thank you for, uh, adjusting the, the, uh, lines on the road at Madison and Broadway also. That's helped clear up some confusion and save up some accidents, so thank you for that.
Oh, okay, perfect. That was actually one of my questions, is it that was helping with the flow of traffic? I'm glad to hear that it is.
I had a question as well.
Sure.
Um, you said that you'll be able to start digging later this month, um, but the original schedule for phase two was to start in early November and to complete in November twenty twenty-four. And you just said, sir, that it does not impact your completion date. Um, but isn't this looking like a two-month schedule slip?
Uh, no, in, in our schedule, our original completion date, um, is, it, it is corrected. Uh, that is November of twenty-fourth is the completion date. And then we did have the delay for the winter holiday built into the schedule. Um, with this current delay that we are impacting, we will make that up with additional crew personnel that we have available.
Okay.
And it doesn't appear that well. Uh, it, yes, and it appears right now that the weather will be favorable for us to work through the winter.
Okay, thank you. So, so you're saying that with additional personnel, you'll be able to maintain? Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Um. Item C here, uh, council, council president to appoint three residents to the RDC Commission. Um. The three appointees that we have are previous, previous in the seat. So Ed, Ed Brand, Amy Lawson, and Scott Meyer will be the appointment for myself. And then we have one seat to fill that's open for Hart, Hart Sumire. He's no longer on the RDC. So we also need to have the council then appoint two residents um, for the, the redevelopment commission. So we're looking for motions to um, to approve. We have Chris, Chris McCrate, which is new on the RDC, which wants to continue his seat there. So, um, he will be considered for that, um, resident seat in the RDC.
Do you want individual motions or do you motion for both of them together?
You can do them, but let's just do them individually. That'd probably be the best way to handle it, I guess.
I'll make a motion to appoint Chris McCrate, redevelopment commission.
I second.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dan Hugie. Is that how you pronounce it?
Yes.
Yugi, thank you. Yugi. Huge, I like huge, though. Uh, to the redevelopment commission.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay. So that, uh, a newer, a new appointee would be Dan Hugie. And then we have Chris McCrate coming back, Ed Brand, Amy Lawson, and Scott Meyer. So that, that will be the RDC. Next up, we have the planning commission. Um, there'll be two resident, um, members that will be assigned by myself. And that would be Amanda Jesky and Brittany Leighton. And then we'll have, uh, one resident citizen to be appointed by the council. So we're looking for a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to appoint Robert Holland, planning commission.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
So the planning commission seats that need to be filled will be Amanda Jesky, Brittany Leighton, and Robert Holland. Okay, next up is the BZA. And we have one resident citizen, citizen member, uh, to be voted by the council. So we're looking for um, this is for Rick Jacobs' seat, but I think he's also put on here that he's interested in staying.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reappoint Rick Jacobs, Board of Zoning Appeals.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And we have one, uh, next it would be the police commission. So we have one resident citizen member there as well. Um, it's Nick Clarkson's position that's open, but he's also expressed interest in staying on. So we need to make a motion for his reappointment if everybody's good with, uh,
Is that Rick Clark?
Nick Clarkson, yeah.
Nick Clarkson?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Nick Clarkson as the citizen member of the police commission.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then we have one council member to be, uh, citizen member, which I'm currently that, and I'm, I'm good with staying on unless there's somebody else wants to jump in.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Tanya Davis, council member on police commission.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. We blew through that pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, old business. So councils to consider the second reading or the final reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-three twelve A. And this is the rezone for approximately, uh, point three-three acres from residential three-point-five to commercial community on the west side of Walnut Street, south of Broadway Street, to accommodate the inspection, the expansion for Huck's gas station.
Right, uh, for the record, I'm Adam Zachlekowski, the planning billing director for the town. Um, if you recall, this went to first reading back on December eighteenth, and then it went to the plan commission, uh, on December twenty-sixth. Uh, the, there was no remonstrance from the public. Um, the plan commission rendered a positive recommendation, which is in your packet. They certified that. Um, it was the same, um, directive that we discussed at the meeting on the eighteenth. Um, so there wasn't any changes. Um, the one thing I know Libby had mentioned during the first reading was, I think the only concern that I heard was, what do we do about, um, since the house would remain as part of the ordinance at four twenty-six Walnut? Um, what would happen if that home fell into disrepair and how would we, um, address that? Um, my, uh, recommendation would be to, uh, since I, I don't think there's any particular language that we could put in there to, um, deal with that particular issue. It's, it's an understandable issue. I think the easiest way to deal with it would just be to, um, within the code enforcement realm, if there became a problem. But, um, since Huck's has a financial incentive to, um, dispose of the property, um, sooner rather than later, I think the market basically would correct it. Um, that's my opinion. Um, other than that, um, we do have the engineer for Huck's. Um, Darren Helms is on the Zoom call as well as Troy Dietz from, uh, the Huck's corporate office in Illinois. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address those, um, or those gentlemen can assist as well. Thank you. I don't have any further questions that haven't been addressed.
Okay, we're looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three twelve A.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make sure everybody's signature. Okay, so that leads us down to the department report. So Joe?
The only thing I have this evening is just to welcome Vanessa to the board and, uh, look forward to working with you for the next four years. And that's all I have this evening, unless you've got something for me.
Thank you, Joe.
Well.
Um, I have a question. I, there's still a lot of rust. I mean, it's, what did they do this week that, uh, cuz it's, it's bad again?
Well, honestly, I haven't heard of anything lately. I know periodically we'll get, uh, a couple of phone calls on, you know, an area. And if, if there's, if there's an area where people are experiencing the groundwater or rusty water that's getting in the system or they're getting it in through their faucet, if they notify us where they live and which area it is, we'll go out and try to flush that area to see if that helps any.
Okay.
But, uh, I've not heard of anything for about a week or more.
Yeah.
Anytime that we've gotten anything, we've been out and, and flushed.
Yeah. Well, it, I think it's over there, uh, where Brandon lives. Um, he was showing me his water.
I had some.
Huh? I had some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Garden Street.
Yeah, just.
And our, and our, and our, at the restaurant, it's really bad tonight.
Best, best thing that we could do, when, if anybody does experience, to let us know as quick as possible in what area. That way, we can't go out and get all the hydrants flushed. Uh, we've got five hundred and fifty hydrants.
Right.
Once we start, we have to keep going. So there's no way we can get them all done in the winter, and we don't know if it's gonna start snowing or freezing. So if, if people are experiencing some discoloration, then we can go out and try to concentrate on those areas and see if we can't help that out a little bit.
Okay. All, um, now. Thank you.
Got it.
Um, well, first I'd like to, um, welcome Vanessa as well, in addition to what Joe said. I certainly look forward to work with you. Um, secondly, we'll put together a, uh, year-end report for twenty twenty-three. So we'll start compiling those numbers. I think, uh, the building permit activity in new houses is pretty similar to what we saw in, um, twenty twenty-two. But we'll see what the numbers show on that. Um, and really beyond that, if you have any, uh, questions on anything, happy to address those.
Do you think the construction is slowing down?
Um. Not necessarily. Um, I, I would have expected it to slow down more with the interest rates going up, but I haven't really seen that, at least here in Fortville. And, um, the one thing that I would add is it, it's hard to, um, extrapolate a, a lot in looking at those numbers because there are a number of different factors at play. And for example, it may have to do with the number of lots that are available for a particular builder. It may be when those lots came online. It may be how aggressively that builder's marketing or selling those. So it, it's always tricky to read a whole lot into those. But I think the, um, the one thing that you'll be able to take away from the numbers is the aggregate total of how do we stand now versus how, how we stood in years past? And, um, and then it's also an indicator, of course, of, of workload in a way. Um, but really beyond that, yeah, I would say it's, um, it's been steady. There has not been a, a drop because of the interest rates, surprisingly.
Um, I have a question about, um, a couple of developments that we've put into place or thought were going to go into place, and then what's happening right now? And one is the, um, where the storage building was supposed to go in over, um, on Garden Street? And it's just a pile of dirt right now, and they're selling dirt from there?
Yes. So, um, the, 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 the folks that own the CLM Pallet Company property, uh, the CLM Pallet Company rents from them. Uh, it's Tony Matthews and his son, Chris Matthews, the M and C Concrete. Um. They also purchased that land, uh, east of there, east of Shaw Street. Um, and they plan on moving forward with self-storage on that property. They're basically looking to build out the same plan that was approved a few years ago.
Okay.
When Matt Dixon had it, and then there was another developer that bought that. So I guess they're still planning on doing that. Um, we'll obviously keep an eye on it to make sure that it's, um, being reasonably well-maintained in the interim. Because as you know, this thing has lingered on, I think, for the whole seven years that I've been here already. Um, and then, by the way, on the other side of, of Shaw Street, on the CLM property, if you'll recall, there was a self-storage um, proposal that was approved. That's on our construction right now, that the Matthews are doing right now. So I think basically they're gonna do that project first, and then they'll move on across the street to that.
Okay. Um, the other one is the development on Fortville Pike and eight fifty?
The, um, Altoff Homes one? Um, if I recall, Altoff Homes, um, but they had put a pause on the project when there was some, uh, when the interest rates went up. So at some point during twenty twenty-three. Um, however, they're still looking to move forward with, with that project. Um, they were in the process of acquiring, um, some right-of-way along Fortville Pike, where the out parcel is that's over there. Um, if you recall, the town wanted to get a path on the east side of Fortville Pike over there. Um, and so they were amenable to doing that and wor- working cooperatively with that out parcel landowner to make that happen. So, um, I think they've recently submitted updated plans for staff review. That's still consistent with what the public saw. Um, they're just more engineering-level plans at this point. So the bottom line is, I would expect them to move forward with the, the project in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
This year.
I've got, I forgot to ask that one question. There's, when you're going down by Moon Drop, are they gonna, are, are we gonna be putting in street lighting down there? Cuz it's awful dark when you're delivering products at night at Moon Drop. It's almost like it's kinda like, it's hard to see, uh, down there. Is there plans to put street lighting all the way down there?
We don't have any plans right now for that area. I will say that, uh, I've been working with Duke for several years, trying to figure out our street lighting and our billing and everything. And there was gonna be a grant come available to convert everything to LEDs, which would have made everything a little more affordable, and we could have expanded a little bit. I think that's still in the works, but I don't think they're moving forward with that quite yet. So I'm kinda waiting for that. I know we were looking to add some, some lights in some different areas, but, and there may be a grant or something come available, so.
It is dark down there, I've noticed that.
Is that, but, but when I was delivering pizzas down there, to turn in there, it's almost, uh, you got cars coming this way, and you can miss that opening, uh, because of the lighting, and it's, it's just dark over there. I just.
I know it's pretty dark turning in scooters also, so it's that same area right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we might consider running some lights down that direction, and whether we wanna use the decorative lights while they're putting up on Broadway or big LED with a Cobra head type look to it.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Heath, I guess Heath is not here. Let's see Heath out here anywhere. Um, Patrick?
Uh, yep. Okay, that's on. Um, my year-end report, you guys should have the first meeting in February. I know last year we had about ninety-eight hundred calls. Uh, this year we took eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine calls. So quite a big jump in a year's time. But, um, wanted to echo what everybody else said. Welcome, Vanessa, look forward to working with you. And luckily, knock on wood, New Year's Eve, uh, was good for Fortville. Everybody was smart and took a cab and Ubered home, so we're glad for that.
Good. Good.
Yeah, I'll answer any questions if you have, and a happy birthday to Joe Renner.
Happy birthday, Joe. Missy, you have anything for us? Alex is not here, I'm assuming, or?
Curtis.
Chris, does, you have anything for us? Okay. And public comments? We got any public comments? Anybody wanna say? Sure. Come on up to, tell us who you are.
Uh, wait till you get up to the mic, so it's recorded.
This is concerning your drink water.
Sit down for me.
And I'm, I'm concerned because I don't wanna drink that stuff. Um, and I don't think anybody does. And I tried to document this. Um, did everybody get my name?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um. Have notes. I think the last time I was at a council meeting was when we had the goats living downtown.
So. It's been a while.
Uh, I haven't had any reason to since then. Um, then I wanted to say, on the December tenth, I had my first problem with the water turning brown, uh, with no warning. And, um, then I got pictures of what it was. And, um, thought I'd ruined a few loads of laundry. Uh, fortunately, some friends said iron off helps, and it does help, but not totally. Um, I, uh, I came down here on, let's see, that was a Sunday. Came, I think Monday I came down here, talked to the town manager, and within hour, he had the water department coming out and flushed my lines out in front. And it was fine for two weeks. He said, um, run my tub water, I don't know how often, but, um, so it's fine for thirteen days, and on Christmas Eve, of course, when I do my laundry, um, the water turned bad again. I started flushing it, took over an hour, you know, flushing toilets, running my tub, running all my sinks, um, plugged up an aerator in one of my sinks I had replaced, and I cleaned them out. Um, and had some tops ruined. I mean, that's not a tie-dyed top, that's a, you know, nice lavender purple top that I had. And, um, so, um, I did come down, after Christmas Day, I came down here, and Joe was out, and they said they'd have him call me the next day, and, um, no, I guess he was busy. So, um, I don't know how often. I mean, this seems to be happening arbitrarily. And, um, I do have my next-door neighbors, Robinsons, say they had brown water. So, um, yeah, I'm concerned. It's gonna, I'm drinking bottled water, I'm using it in my coffee maker, cuz I don't want it ruined. I, um, when do I do my laundry? Um, and it's, that's gonna, it might get expensive, you know, replacing these clothes. And I am. And I am keeping a track of what I'm going to have to replace. And, um, yeah, lavender top. And, um, I can replace that. But Christmas towel, it was pretty. Now it's different. So, yeah, I'm kind of upset and tired of this. And I also, there is something called iron toxicity that can, I don't know what our, you know, levels are at the worst, but it can affect children. And so, um, I don't know. I think that's about all I have to say, but I wish this problem would be taken care of.
We do too. Yeah, it's, it's been a long process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not predictable.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't think it's going to get any better because aren't we replacing the lines on 67, some of them? There are going to be some pipes being cut in next summer too.
Well, that'll be this winter, but we're going to be flushing as we go out there.
It, it could cause some disruption maybe, but it's unlikely.
As soon as, as soon as we know, we have a good 30 to 45 days. There is not going to be getting down into cold and freezing. We're going to get out and start flushing hydrants. That, that's part of the reason why we've got some of the dirty water, just because of the interruption and putting in the new plant, messing with the well pipes and everything and disturbing. So it's, it's in the pipes. Um, and I think I asked you before, do you have any kind of filtration or anything on your house at all?
He's going to test water.
Okay.
See about it. Yeah. You know, I've lived here since 98, I think, and I've never had this problem.
Well, that, and that's, and I'm glad to hear that because I mean, we're very proud of our water. And unfortunately this is kind of a, a rough time trying to get this new plant up and running.
Necessary evil.
We, we put out a, a good quality of water and it's, um, people are not used to having filters or water softeners because they've not needed them in the past. What people might be experiencing at this moment is if our softeners aren't up to speed yet at the water plant, then if we didn't soften water at all, a lot of communities don't water or don't soften. So we do soften it, filter it and everything before it goes out. A lot of times that's done at the home. We try to take care of that before it gets to your home. But unfortunately with this process, there's been some lag and then not being able to flush the hydrants. Then plus some of the older homes. I mean, that's like when we came out to test yours, pulled the meter out, ran it, it was crystal clear at the meter. And I seen your pictures and I, you know, I don't doubt. I mean, obviously you're getting some really nasty water. But a lot of times some of the, uh, the plumbing in the homes, you know, if it's a galvanized pipe, you know, could be jarred or anything like that, could start to break. It lose water pressure fluctuation. It could be from like when there's a water main break, you know, that fluctuates water pressure. It could guard the pressure in your home and. Right. Well, there's, yeah, there's some, uh, other flushing and stuff that's going on around. Anytime we flush, if somebody calls and they have a complaint in one area, when we go to flush that area, we don't open it wide open because we're just going to start stirring it up again. We open, we just crack it open and let it run. Yeah. So when we flush, we don't flush full bore. We just, we let a good healthy stream flow for a while. Yeah.
Uh, I would like, you know, it's unpredictable and so destructive. And I'd like to drink.
Is, is it a concern that she said, you said, right, that you had a problem and then, and then your hydrant or your line was flushed and it got better and then it got bad again? Is that, is that?
On the 17th and 11th it came out and within an hour, the water department came out and flushed it. And they said it was clear and I was, had no problem for, um, 13 days. And then on Christmas Eve, it got bad again.
Right. Is that a concern? Why, why would it get bad again after it's been flushed? If we keep talking about the flushing being the thing that's going to fix all of it?
Well, see our, the way our water system set up, it's looped. It's only called electric system. It's on a grid. So water goes both directions. So if there's a big demand this way, the water will flow that direction and we can kind of move some of the, the dirty water, you know, that needs to be flushed this direction, but we may be pulling it from somewhere else. Then if we go flush another direction, it could be kind of moving some of this water a different direction. And realistically where her location is at, the water's got to leave the water plant, go underneath Stottlemyre ditch and go up Noel Lane. So if all that heavy sediment is setting in the pipe, it should be setting in that water main underneath the stream. That's where all the heavy solids would be setting until we get to flush it out. If we get a big demand up in there, it could pick up a little bit of that water that's, the, the rust and the brown stuff is sitting in the bottom of that main. It could pick it up a little bit. So Christmas Eve, if there was a lot of people home using water, might've picked up a little more demand and it could have picked up some of that stuff that's not, uh, been able to flush out. Well, again, um, the, the reason why we recommend you use your bathtub is because you don't have a screen on it. Most people don't have a screen. So you can run clear water through it without plugging anything up and you'll get a bigger volume. So if you let your cold water run your tub for a little bit and clear it up, if it doesn't clear up after just a couple of minutes, then give us a call and we'll come out. Yeah.
Yeah.
And we actually had people on Christmas Eve flushing hydrants. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Hopefully we get through, hopefully we get through it soon.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Council comments? Oh, got somebody? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking down and you're moving.
I'm Sharon Beetson and I'm a resident of Fortville, right on Broadway. Um, I have a question. Um, the property that's over behind on Noel Street, that's between, um, Studio 309 and the corner house. Um, can we park in front of all three of those spots or all three of those properties that are there? Is that public parking?
It is public parking, but right now it looks like they've got dirt in there rather than stone. So.
Right now it's what? I'm sorry.
Looks like they've got dirt in there rather than putting stone back for parking.
Okay. So if I was to park where the straw is placed, um, in front of that property, um, I wouldn't get a ticket, would I? Or get hauled away?
As long as you're not blocking someone's drive, that is a public parking area. If you block the drive, they have the right to come and tow your vehicle at their expense.
Okay, I will.
Just like if someone were to block your driveway, you wouldn't like that. So as long as you're courteous to your neighbors, you should be fine.
Okay, council comments?
Libby?
Oh, yeah. Um, happy new year, everyone. Welcome Vanessa. And, uh, I don't have, oh, I do have something. I had my solid waste meeting. Um, yes, today. They're, they're still recycling. So, uh, they, as, uh, they're doing a shoe collection with the schools, which is pretty exciting. Um, they collect a lot of shoes. If you have any shoes that you want to donate, let me know. I'll donate them for you. Um, what else are they doing? And they're setting up the recycling events this year. So I'll let you know when those are. That's, that's all I've been doing.
Ryan?
Look forward to working with Vanessa. I don't have anything though.
I just want to say happy new year, everybody, and thank the people that, um, showed interest in some of these committees that we have and keep doing that, uh, in the future. If somebody has to leave, then there's somebody there to fill those seats as well. At least we have options, but I appreciate it, the interest that we did get. And I want to welcome Vanessa as well.
Um, hi, everybody. I'm Vanessa. And I, I look forward to serving everybody here. And, uh, I have a Facebook page that I made where I post up information. I put a post earlier today about some, you know, some of the things we're going to be doing this evening. So if you're on there, please feel free to go follow it on there. I, I put a post on the Facebook, uh, the Fortville Happenings page, but that was a little while ago. So that's all for me.
Uh, I want to also, uh, welcome Vanessa to the town council. Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign vouchers.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:09.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:09 PM.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, everybody. Please come back.